Good evening, I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Euclid Board of Education. Today is August 13th, 2012, and we are meeting at the Fordice Building. I know you know where you are, I'm doing that for the benefit of the TV. Would you please stand and join me in the process of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Here.
Mrs. Lysy. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Sudar.
Here.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Here.
Four members are present.
Thank you. Take a motion to adopt the minutes for July 9th, 23rd, 26th, and 31st.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. There will be no legislative liaison report or student liaison report this evening. We'll move on to the visitor comments relative to the printed agenda. Are there any comments on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then to the reports and recommendations of the treasurer. Mr. Vasek.
Thank you. Item made as a resolution to approve the financial data as submitted to the board, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah, well, item nine is a resolution to point the delegate to the OSBA Capitol Conference.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that Kaye Van Hoen act as our official delegate to the 56th Annual Business Meeting of the Ohio School Board Association.
And isn't there an alternate also? Or not? Does it say?
Yes.
Yes, there's an alternate in the resolution.
That would be you.
Oh, I nominate myself to be the alternate. I hadn't thought about that, but that'd be fine.
Okay. Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Traditionally, the board president serves as the delegate and the vice president serves as the alternate for a long, boring meeting. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
And that...
That was my report. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to reports and recommendations of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, wait, I better introduce you first to everybody. Sorry, I meant to do that before.
It's okay.
I'd like to introduce once again Mr. Bell, who is our new superintendent. He grew up attending Toledo Public Schools, graduating from Woodward High School. His parents, both college graduates, encouraged him and his brothers to excel educationally first, and never allowed any of them to make excuses for failure. Mr. Bell graduated from The Defiance College in 1978 and received his master's of education degree in 1979 from Bowling Green State University. His educational career began as a marketing education teacher and basketball coach at Grove City High School. His administrative career began as an assistant principal at Kahana Lincoln High School in August of 1993. At the time, Lincoln's high's student achievement was stagnant for specific student groups and student discipline was a major concern. By introducing the school to the Renaissance concept of recognizing student achievement, results were seen as more students were recognized and rewarded for doing the right things. The Renaissance is a program that recognizes students in three significant areas: attendance, behavior, and academics. This program became nationally recognized, and Mr. Bell was inducted into the National Jostens Renaissance Hall of Fame in San Diego, California, in 1999. He also received the district's Vision Award for initiating positive change. Mr. Bell was selected to be, serve as principal at Groveport Madison High School in the spring of 2000, where he once again directed a school to higher academic achievement. In the spring of 2004, he became principal of Westerville South High School. At the time, the school was in its first year of school improvement and had not met AYP for two of the 10 student groups, and had just experienced two previous failed levies. Immediately that first year, things began to change through many initiatives, including reemphasizing a common focus for instructional practice throughout the building. In 2004-05, academic year, Westerville South increased its Ohio graduation test results in every content area. The next year, South had the highest performing index of the three high schools in Westerville, as well as the highest number of students at the advanced and accelerated levels, and the highest attendance and graduate rates, graduation rates in the district. Westerville South received an excellent rating on both the 2004-05 and the 2005-06 state report cards. Additionally, it was recognized by Standards and Poor's Evaluation Service for, quote, "significantly narrowing the achievement gap between higher and lower performing student groups." South was one of only 77 schools in the state of Ohio recognized for a 12% reduction in its gap. The momentum continued during his four years, and in the fall of 2007, Westerville South was recognized by U.S. News and World Report with a silver medal as one of the top 400 high schools in the country, and by Newsweek in the spring of 2008. In the spring of 2008, Mr. Bell moved to be the director of Secondary Academic Affairs, where he was responsible for over 6,800 students in four middle schools and three high schools. Academic achievement continued to improve, as reflected in significant improvement in the high school ACT scores and standardized test status, as well as one middle school being identified as excellent with distinction. The district continues its success today using the groundwork that Mr. Bell had laid. In August 2011, Mr. Bell accepted the position as deputy superintendent and chief academic officer for Columbus City Schools. Immediately, Mr. Bell set out to meet all 118 principals, 25 support personnel, and five regional directors to determine how to work collectively and support student achievement. He also introduced to the district monthly Saturday leadership workshops focused on assistant principal development, along with other initiatives for student achievement. Mr. Bell is married to his lovely wife Toni, and they have two sons, Keith Junior, a 2011 Bowling Green graduate, and Josh, who is now a senior at the University of Cincinnati. Please join me in welcoming again Mr. Bell.
Thank you. I was just sitting here thinking that if Kaye had not read the bio, we'd probably be done with the board meeting by now. It's a, it's a pleasure for me to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with the team. And I think what that information that you read does not reflect is that there were a lot of really good people behind the scenes that were working hard to make some of those things happen. I was just sitting there thinking about that. And what I'm really pleased about here is that I have an equally impressive team, and I really appreciate the team that I'm working with here, along with the Board of Education, to help improve student achievement. So it's a collaborative effort. We're working together as a group. It's not just one person, it's all of us together. And I really look forward to being a part of the community, look forward to the work that we have in front of us, because I know we can get it done. And I look forward to working with each, each of you as we move our students forward. So thank you for welcoming to the community, and thank you for, for all your support.
Okay. Now you can go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, at this time, I'd like to turn over to Dr. Celico, who will talk about our personnel recommendations.
Thank you. We'll skip down to item number 10 here, and that is a resolution considering the educational program changes, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Item 11 is a resolution considering grant payments, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Item 12 is a resolution considering certified staff for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments?
Yes. First off, I would like to announce that in this resolution, we have two, I need to point out, two retiree hires, and that's Margaret Nielsen at the high school, who will be teaching part-time, the grads program, and Beverly Howes, who will be the family consumer science, and she will be doing the first semester only. Again, that was based on enrollment and the need. As we go on here, it's difficult to find people with these certifications and licensures, so we've been lucky enough to ask them to come back and work for us part-time. In addition, I have a number of people here this evening that I'd like to introduce you to. And first off, we will start with Yolanda. So Yolanda, if you would please stand for a moment.
Here.
Yolanda Rodriguez, we are recommending her appointment to this evening for the, a reading teacher at Forest Park. And Ms. Rodriguez previously taught as an English teacher with the Martin County School District in Florida. She has served as a lead teacher, teacher mentor, teacher trainer, and department chair. She received her bachelor's degree from Notre Dame College of Ohio and her master's degree from the University of Phoenix. So Yolanda, we'd like to welcome you if you'd like to come up to the podium and just say a few words. Appreciate that.
Hi, I'm Yolanda Rodriguez. I'd like to thank the board. Glad to be here tonight. I'm glad to be a part of the team here at Euclid. I did teach in Florida for seven years. Before that, I was a Cleveland teacher for five years. I've served as a lead teacher, a Marasano trainer, instructional leader, and classroom teacher for both reading and language arts. I have a master's in computer information systems, and I have a leadership degree as well, principal certification as well. I'm very excited to be part of the team, and I look forward to having a great year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Do you have anyone with you? I do. My fiance is Henry Peddiger, my daughter is Maya, and they're both here with me today. That's my family.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
See, I was going to warn you about our weather, but since you've already been in Cleveland before, we're okay.
Next, we have Spencer Small, who I don't believe came in. Okay, I know that was a 50/50 chance that he'd be able to make it this evening. Spencer, we are recommending his appointment for an enrichment math teacher at Forest Park. And Mr. Small was employed with the Cleveland School District as an instructional coach. He provided professional development and coaching for teaching in the classroom. Mr. Small received his bachelor's degree from Cleveland State University and his master's degree from John Carroll University. And I remember when I was interviewing him, he was certified in both language arts and math, and he made it quite clear that his passion is math. So I'm looking forward to him as a welcome addition to our staff. And next, we have Marla Nun as a reading teacher at Forest Park. And Ms. Nun taught 7th and 8th grade in language arts and reading at Hope Academy Northwest in Cleveland. She was employed in this capacity since January 2002. Ms. Nun earned her bachelor's degree from Cleveland State University in 2006. So Marla, if you'd like to come up and say a few words?
Hi, my name is Marla Nun. I did teach at Hope Academy, taught social studies, language arts, and reading for both grade levels. And I'm looking forward to working in Euclid. My husband works in Cleveland, so we're looking to move out in the area. I do not like speaking in public. I get really nervous. I am excited to be here. I'm looking forward to a new school year, and I don't know, I grew up in Tennessee, but I like Ohio, except the weather. So that's sad, I guess.
Did you have anyone that came with you?
No, I have two little ones, and this is their bedtime dinner time, and all of you should be very glad they stay at home.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lalena Regishwar. Ms. Regishwar is a first-year teacher who received her bachelor's degree from Roosevelt University and her master's of education degree from Ursuline College. Prior to becoming a teacher, Ms. Regishwar worked in business financing and marketing. So if you'd like to come up, Lalena? I practiced that. How'd I do?
I was going to...
Was saying it all week. I did it.
I am delighted and excited to be joining the Euclid City School District. It's especially sweet for me, because when I moved to Cleveland in the mid-'80s, I lived on Lake Shore and East 260. So it's like coming home for me. I would like to thank the members of the board, Superintendent Bell, Assistant Superintendent Celico, for your word of confidence, and I'm looking forward to this coming school year. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
My husband is sitting at the back, and I have three kids. The youngest is sophomore at Princeton University. The oldest is a boy, so I signed, and he works for Google in New York.
Oh, wow.
And my middle child works for a startup in the Bay Area in San Francisco, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Very nice. The next two people I'd like to introduce you to are being hired for a one-year temporary contract, but as we often know, may lead to future employment, as we have two year-long leaves of absences. And first, we have Tammy Shiplett, who is unable to come. She is relocating from Virginia. So we had a Florida person this time, and now someone from Virginia as well. So she was, she's in the process of moving, so she was unable to be here this evening. But Ms. Shiplett previously served as a grant writer and science education coordinator with Glenville State College. She also taught biology in the Canton City School District for many years. And Ms. Shiplett received her bachelor's degree from Walsh University and her master's degree from the University of Phoenix. So we're glad to have her aboard as well. And finally, we have Emily McKim, and Ms. Kim, recently, McKim, recently completed an administrative internship with Brooklyn Middle School and has served as a language arts teacher at Holy Family School. She received her bachelor's of middle childhood education from Cleveland State University and is on track to receive her master's degree in May 2013. And I was fortunate enough to have Emily in class, although she earned this job on her own. I did not interview her. So Summaroni did that for us and found that Emily was a great student in class as well. So Emily, if you'd like to come up to the podium?
First of all, I just want to say thank you very much. I'm excited to be in Euclid, working this year. I know several people that have worked in Euclid and have expressed to me what a wonderful school district it is, how many opportunities you have, so I'm looking forward to working in Euclid this year. I spent the last couple of years teaching math and language arts, and I'm equally passionate about both of them, so I'm looking forward to helping middle schoolers achieve in reading. I just want to say thank you to everyone. And I brought my husband, Bill, and I left my two, my one and three-year-old daughters at home, as she had said, "You should be happy that I did that." They're crazy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's welcome everyone.
That concludes my introductions.
Okay. How are we doing on hires? Do we have all of our positions filled?
We're very close. We'll have this addition of the .4 math teacher that I will begin looking for this week, what we have begun to search for, and a couple resignations in the classified side of things, so just a couple openings, but we'll be ready with full complement when school starts. It'll be good.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Item 13 is a resolution considering the classified staff for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second by Mrs. Sudar. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Item 14 is a resolution considering auxiliary services staff for the 2012-13 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second. By...
Second.
Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or comments? The auxiliary staff is for the non-public schools. We'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Item 15 is a resolution considering the Northeast Adult Basic Literacy Education Resource Center staff for the 12-13 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Item 16 is a resolution considering the Adult Basic Literacy Education staff for the 2012-13 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments?
Is this an increase in the number of staff members, or are we just seeing them all in one list, where sometimes we see a few at a time?
Yeah, it varies in the hiring process, but no, I'm not, to my knowledge, that we've increased.
I was hoping we had more people taking advantage of this program, so...
I'm not sure, Mr. Schweitzer, are you somewhere? Do you know if there's been an addition to the staff?
Enable?
Yes.
No, they're changing things around, because there's new requirements, again, with the grant action, and the grant is a little bit bigger than it was before. And they're also transitioning with Gloria Gillette, transitioning her way out, and Monica Nabel, Monica Nabel is moving from one part of Enable to House at Shore. Our house, again, is a different job function. So now that really more is changing and creating...
In case you thought we did the same thing twice, the first one was for the Adult Basic Literacy Education Resource Center, which actually serves teaching teachers. And then the second part is the Adult Basic Literacy Education Program, which helps people get their GEDs. So two resolutions that sounded almost identical. Do we have any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Okay, Mr. Bell.
Item number 17 is a consideration to authorize contracts and recommending that we authorize participation in Ohio Schools Council Program and OSC membership and administrative fees, participation in the OSC Cooperative Purchasing Program, and the OSC Legal Hotline Program, and authorize contract to the CCI North Coast for the purchase of two 47 passenger lift buses, and approve the lease agreement for the GED and ESL programs at Shore Culture Center. Just let me give you a little background. What this allows us to do is to be able to, when we make cooperative purchases, it allows us to be able to receive a better deal. It's almost like buying in bulk, and so you're able to reduce your costs. The Legal Hotline Program is an opportunity for us to have anonymous tips on certain things that may occur, so that we can be able to do that. And obviously, we need to be able to support our students with special needs, and so the purchase of the two lift passenger buses will give us an opportunity to be able to do that. So that's just a little bit of background on that, in that particular recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Do we need to do a motion, right? Because I forgot to write it down.
We do not.
Okay. Now, I have a motion, please?
So moved.
By Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you.
We have two miscellaneous items. Item number 18 is a consider approval for the Regional Transit Authority Agreement. And what that is, is that's an agreement for us to be able to provide support for students in transportation using the Regional Transit Authority buses, and it allows them a discount. I don't have the exact figure, but it allows them to have a discount in being able to ride the bus.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Call the roll. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
And then the last item, item number 19 for approval, is the approval of the 2012-13 bus stops.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
We had a lot of routine items to make, so moved quickly. Do you have any informal for us?
Just want to just bring the audience up to speed on just what we've been doing since August 1st, since my, really before that, in July, the, I worked 10 days in July to really get a chance to meet some of the team and get a chance to carve out some of what we're going to be working on. And obviously, we're going to be asking the public for some support, and so we're trying to put together our plan. We put together some community meetings where we have an opportunity to meet with people and discuss what that might look like. There's some specifics that we're going to be talking about in those community meetings, and the team has helped to plan what that will look like, and I have a calendar that's quite full of evening activities where we're getting a chance to get out. And the idea is that we have really three basic goals. The first one being that we are going to really look hard and heavy at our student achievement and what we need to do to help improve that student achievement, and there's some specific things that we're looking at underneath that, and really trying to put together an academic plan that supports K-12 education and really helps us to be able to improve as a school district. And then the second basic goal for us is to be really fiscally accountable with the, be real good stewards of the districts, of the school district's money. And one of the things that I've talked about in the community meetings is to be able to have quarterly meetings with the public, where we look at our, the investment that we're going to ask the public to make, and give them a progress report, let them know exactly what we're doing, and be real specific about where that, those resources are, what kinds of challenges we have, what kinds of success we have, and solicit support from the community to be able to not only help us to move things forward, but also be able to let them know exactly what's occurring and where things are as far as our, our status. So that would be the second goal. And then the third one is to continue to increase the marketability and the credibility of the school district. This is an outstanding place to live. I really enjoy the water and enjoy the area and the community. I think there's, there are many untapped resources in this community, and so we're really working to identify what they look like, what those resources look like, and really trying to make sure that we are real intentional about making sure that people understand what's real. And I always talk about the difference between perception and reality. We want to make sure that the community members understand what the reality of the school district is, and so thus the meetings on a quarterly basis and coming to the public, not necessarily because we have an issue for revenue, but because we want to make sure that we're informing them of where we are and what we're doing. So that's one of the, one of the tenets of the credibility. The other piece is holding our students accountable for their behavior and holding them accountable for high expectations, and really making sure that these things that we do, that they understand that they're probably our greatest marketers, and that they have to be on point for their behavior and how they carry forth the district message. So we're going to look at some things that we can do differently to address that, and also make sure that we solicit support from the community, because it just doesn't happen with just school. We've got to have continued support, and it has to be a continual, continual involvement. So we're really working on those things. So in the community meetings, what I've been trying to do is to identify and make sure people are clear about what it is that we're trying to do, what our outcomes are, being very visible and transparent about where we are with finances, making sure that we look internally at the things that we need to do to make sure that we're being fiscally accountable and working in a collaborative to make sure that we're carrying forth the directions from the board, but also being accountable to the, to the taxpayers. So those are just some of the things that we've been working through. I've had two cabinet meetings with my new team, and so they've been bringing me up to speed on where we are and trying to set context for as we move forward. So we've been working together, and just as a team, as we get to know how we work, we're planning our convocation, we're planning some administrative retreats, we're trying to get all of those things together, because we are going to be doing some things in a different way, and we're going to look at how we might be able to think outside the box to be able to get done what needs to get done in the district. And it's going to take all of us to do that, and we're going to work really hard to make that happen. So it's been a busy July. There hasn't been any honeymoon at all. I don't know where that is. And so we're still waiting for that, but we're moving forward hard and heavy. And again, as I said before, really appreciate the support of everyone at the table and all of you, and we will be asking for your support as we continue to move forward. So that's my, Madam Chair, that's my report.
Thank you very much. I'll just make a quick comment, that I have attended some of the community meetings with Mr. Bell, and the reception has been very warm. People understand what he's saying and what he wants to get accomplished, and that's important. And, you know, unfortunately, without having a newspaper in town, a lot of times, we can't get all the information out we want, but this has been a very successful way for people to meet him. If you have not heard from anyone and want to attend a community meeting, you can call the board, the superintendent's office, they can tell you when they are. We've just about booked them almost every day this month, including at some churches, and almost every councilperson is also having a meeting in their ward, so we can put you in touch with the right people to go to one of his meetings. Okay, move on. Do we have any communications or petitions?
We do not.
Any new business or old business?
No.
Okay. Okay. Is there any board members informal? Well, it's going to be an exciting start of this new year. We do have our four new buildings that will be opening on time the day after Labor Day. And the public will have an opportunity to see them at the Dedication Services, which will be in mid-September. We won't be doing ribbon cutting because the kids will already be getting in there. But you've got to really see these buildings. They are absolutely fantastic. They are state-of-the-art. The technology is there. I'm sure that the teachers that are going to the middle school and high school will be quite jealous because the technology is phenomenal. And they're fun to go in and see. They make you feel very welcomed. And the classrooms are actually a little larger than most of our classrooms in the city already, so that's nice. And then they have a lot of extras, things like the bathrooms and the rooms for the pre-K kindergarten classrooms, first grade too? I'm not sure.
No.
No, okay. Tutoring rooms, in-between rooms, so that the teacher can see what's going on in that room and so forth. Nice, large gyms, a cafeteria, no more kids in basements or old classrooms for cafeterias. They're really state-of-the-art and beautiful. Lots of natural light throughout the buildings. And of course, as one of the big things was they are very efficient. So we will be saving money in our operating costs, which is very important. And we're just looking really, looking forward to this. I've taken many tours of the building, and they are absolutely wonderful. I wish my kids were young.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, I want to just elaborate on the new buildings because coming in from the outside and looking at that, I just think that that's going to be a, when we talk about marketing the district and credibility the district, you're opening, we are opening as a school district four new buildings. And it goes to say that really what we're trying to do, and Mrs. Van Hoem pointed out, that we're really actually saving a million dollars by opening the four, the four new buildings, which I think should be noted, that it's, we talk about being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. I think it's been a brilliant plan. And I'd also like to give a shout-out to Pat Higley, who I think has led the project and done a great job with making sure that the architects are on point, that we are being efficient, that we're doing all of the things that need to be done. And so I appreciate his leadership in that and how we were able to really open these buildings on time. I've been a part of it. In Columbus, we had several building projects, and we could not open them on time because we did not have some of the things that are in place here in some of the, those areas. So I really applaud his efforts along with his team and along with the other administrators that have been a part of that. But it's really, I think you're going to really be impressed with those buildings. And again, there, the efficiency that Mrs. Van Hoem pointed out is evident as you walk in and how they are aesthetically aligned and really done to a high degree. And to have those ready to open on the fourth, just like I said before, it just deserves some, a special acknowledgement. So I appreciate those efforts.
I did forget to mention security with all the security cameras. And if you're, if you come to school after it's open, there's only one door, and it immediately takes you into the office area so that no one can get into where the classrooms are without being allowed in by the people in the central office area. So it's very, very nice.
Okay, I did want to say something.
Go ahead.
And this is something that I noticed just as a citizen. The Euclid High School sports schedule is on the main sign downtown Euclid.
Reader.
So the, the reader board. So the community is now well-aware of all of our sporting activities, and we welcome anyone to participate in watching any of them. I just flew in here from our first high school boys soccer scrimmage, stayed a little too long. But the seasons are going to be beginning soon, so the community's welcome to spectate. It's a lot of fun.
Any other board members informal? Okay, at this time, we open to visitor comments. And this is open to any residents or staff members who wish to come up and address the board. You have to come up to the podium, please. State your name, your address.
Hi, my name is Nancy Curati. My address is 174 East 203rd Street. On April 25th of this year, several employees of this district received an email from the Ohio Board of Education recommending that the IRN number of Roosevelt be retained by Arbor, the new school over on 200th Street. This recommendation did not come lightly. It is my understanding from numerous conversations with the state that this recommendation is based on student data, state and federal law, no child left behind, and what's in the best interest of the student, not the district. I cannot imagine any legitimate reason for using the IRN number of Lincoln other than to deny students that would have attended Lincoln and access to the Ed Choice Scholarship. There were 722 Ed Choice applications given to the Euclid schools this year. Only forty-seven students were deemed not qualified, forty-seven. Out of those forty-seven, nineteen were for kindergartners that are slated to enter Arbor. Most of those parents are here tonight. At the same time, fifteen kindergartners entering Arbor were awarded the Ed Choice Scholarship. These thirty-four students would all be entering the same exact school. My child is one of the students affected by this decision, as are many of the eighteen other students whose parents are here tonight as well. Okay, and we would like two questions answered. First of all, we want to know why the recommendation made by the state was blatantly ignored. The state, like I said, makes recommendations based on the best interest of the students. The second thing we want to know is how it can be justified that you can award fifteen students the scholarship that are entering Arbor as kindergartners, I'm talking kindergartners here, and deny it to nineteen, who are also kindergartners entering the same section. At this point, it doesn't really matter who made the decision, but we do know that you have the opportunity to make the decision right still because this IRN number isn't actually being assigned according to the state until end of August, beginning of September. I live in this city because I love it here, as do, does everyone here, I imagine. And I'm a public school teacher. I would love to send my kids to the city of Euclid, but the city of Euclid schools aren't passing. And I need to do what's right for my child, not what's right for this district. My child is my responsibility, not the district. And right now, that would be sending her to a private school. And let me add that I could send my child to the district that I work in, which is excellent with distinction. But I live in Euclid, and I love Euclid, and I want my child to grow up in Euclid with children from Euclid, and I want to keep the money in Euclid, even if it's at a private school versus the public schools. So I don't want to send her off to another district. With the taxes in the city already being one of the highest in the state and then having the expense of having to send your child to a private school because the public schools aren't performing, it, it makes it very difficult for those of us who have lived here all of our lives to remain here. I mean, when you're thinking about the cost of a private education over thirteen years for however many kids you have, it makes it more financially sound decision for us to leave the city. And that's what it boils down to at this point. So again, I mean, we really, we want answers. We've been given a runaround by the state. We've been given a runaround by the board here, all right, by all the people that are involved in this decision. I mean, somebody made the decision somewhere along the line to blatantly ignore this recommendation from the state and to do whatever they saw fit, to put on my application and their applications that our children are going to Lincoln, which does not exist.
Do you have written comments you wanted to submit to the board?
I could write them up and send.
I just wondered if you had them for us.
No, I don't have them for you.
Would you please do that?
Oh, absolutely.
Send them to the attention of Mr. Bell.
Absolutely.
Okay. And that, so that we, we have also your name and address.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Bell already has that. He emailed me today.
Did you get my response?
I did get your response.
Yep.
Okay.
I did get your response.
Okay, good.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we going to get answers to these questions?
Not tonight.
Yes.
But we, but you will get it by the next board, regular board meeting.
Will school start?
Will school start?
Next, I'm sorry, it's two weeks from now. It'd be our next meeting.
Well, that's our next schedule.
That's our next schedule board meeting, other than the facilities meeting. Ma'am? Name and address, please.
Good evening, board members, superintendent and assistant superintendent. My name is Gwen Jackson, and I am Title I Educational Assistant at Arbor Elementary. My question is directed to Superintendent Bell. You mentioned that we will be saving a million dollars by opening these four schools. Could you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Yeah.
Mister, how about if we had Mr. Vasik speak to that? He's the treasurer.
The, the majority.
I didn't get your address.
Gwen Jackson, 33448 Vine Street. I'm East Lake resident.
Okay.
The majority of the savings comes about through the consolidation of the buildings. We're basically, we're moving from six elementaries to four elementaries. Consequently, we need fewer principals, secretaries, custodians, support staff, a few, fewer teachers. So the majority of the savings is in personnel costs.
But also utilities.
Yes, the, the, the buildings are more utility-efficient. But we are saving about one million dollars per year from that.
And I'd just like to add, Madam Chair, members of the board, just the fact that when you consider the fact that in school districts, eighty percent of your budget roughly is personnel, then when you look at a million, you can see that when you can get into the personnel costs, how, how efficient that really makes the district because that's really where we spend most of our money, dealing with the personnel pieces. So the consolidation is allowing us to really make, and I think I referenced the fact that trying to really be efficient with our resources is really allowing us to be able to do that.
Thank you very much. You have a question? Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll take the motion.
Hi, my name is Kelly Hanson. I live at 125 East 192nd. And my children are also, three of the children slated to go to Arbor Elementary School this fall. I want to say that, you know, having heard Mr. Bell's credentials, I understand this sounds like a great move for the city. It sounds like the city schools are looking forward to doing something really positive. But in the interim, our children are suffering a little bit. So we're having a real hard time with this, and we just want to let you know that we understand that the decision was made for the city schools. I mean, you have to do what was positive for them, but we have to do what was positive for us. There were forty-seven kids that were affected by this decision. And that, going into that, you just have to take into effect that the next couple of years, we really hope that this is something that moves forward, that the schools get out of this position. We really hope that you guys are able to pull the scores and the achieving and, you know, with the discipline and the kids in general. But the population of those schools really makes up the majority of this. So what we're asking is that you guys look at this again. There was a reconsideration formed through the Board of Ed Choice due on the fifteenth. We have all sent in our reconsiderations. We've asked that you look at our applications as well because what we're going to, they're going to do is come back to the city of Euclid and say, you said that these kids are supposed to go to Lincoln. What we want you to do is look at those applications again and say Arbor is the same school as Lincoln. It might be new. You might have slapped a new coat of paint on it, built it up from the ground, or done whatever you did. It might be state-of-the-art. It might have great bathrooms. It might, right in the rooms. It might have iPads for all the kids. That's fantastic. But what we want to know is at the end of the year, are those schools going to achieve? Is it a good decision for us to send our children to these schools? I had a public education, a lot of these people have public educations. We're not saying that that's a bad thing. We're just saying that we deserve the choice based on this program that's offered. Again, being part of Euclid, paying the taxes that we do, having our children live in this community, we want to keep them in this community. We want to be able to do that. And when you look through this, I mean, we received all of the kids that were approved, all of the kids that applied. And I live half a mile away from people that were approved for the same, very same scholarship, this very same scholarship. They have the opportunity to send their kids to a school of their choice. That's all I want to do. If you prove to me that you're doing well, I would love to send my children to your school. But I need that, I need to see that happen in your schools. I need to see that. It's great that we have wonderful new people, teachers, coming in from different states. It's wonderful that we have all of these new buildings. But we need to see it happen with the children. And these are all parents, and I know that you don't want to lose parents that are involved like us. I mean, that's one of the biggest things, I think, that you guys are concerned about, losing parents and the support of your school system to private schools. So we do want to support you. We will support you if you can prove to us that this is something that is worth supporting. I mean, everybody wants to back you guys. Everyone wants to say, we're proud to live in Euclid. This is a great school. They have great teachers. They have great kids. But we need to show their education as well. We need to have something to prove for it at the end of the day. And so we're really hoping that you'll reconsider that. You'll speak to the board because we've spoken to the Ohio Board of Education, and we know that they've been in contact with you back and forth, trying to solve this situation for us. And we hope that you will reconsider, at least with these forty-seven children that were affected by this decision, give them the opportunity to go to the school of their choice for this year based on the zoning or the rezoning that we're, that we were supposed to go to Roosevelt. If you prove to us, I promise you, I will send my kids to a public school if you guys can prove that you can, it's worth it for me.
Thank you. Do you want to also submit your comments to Mr. Bell, please?
Absolutely. And we have sent, and I just want to let you know, we have all submitted letters to Euclid Board of Education, to the Ohio Board of Education, and, but we haven't received responses necessarily. So this is something that, okay, there's at least one email that came through Nancy Curati.
Yeah, I got it.
Whatever.
I got it.
Yeah, it came through the whole desk. But we have addressed this, we've been trying to address this. Unfortunately, there is a very tight timeframe. You know, school starts at the end of this month, depending on where we send them.
Hanson.
My name's Kelly Hanson.
Okay.
So it does start very quickly. We have to make a decision. You know, unfortunately, we threw all our eggs up in the air, and we're waiting for something to drop to decide where we're sending our kids. And it's something that needs to be addressed in a, you know, time-sensitive manner. So we really hope that in the next couple of days, even though you're not scheduled for another board meeting for a month or whenever it is, that you'll really take it upon yourselves to discuss this and to discuss it with the Ohio Board of Education. We're not necessarily asking you to even pull back your IRN numbers because obviously, you're doing what's best for the schools. But we're asking that you take these forty-seven children that were affected by this decision, who went through the trouble to fill out the paperwork, to, you know, send their kids to another school, and give them that opportunity. You know, I know that your decision probably didn't come lightly as well as the recommendation didn't. It's something that's beneficial. But we are also concerned that there is one other school IRN number that was used for one of these new four schools, which is Glenbrook. And Glenbrook wasn't even open yet last year.
No, it's not, that's not correct.
Okay, well, that was what the Ohio Board of Education told us, that, or we actually have an email somewhere in here.
As far as I know, that's not correct. But that's beside the point, it's not affecting your issue.
Okay, well, I'm, it does affect the issue as to how this all came about. That's how the decisions were made. So yes, it does affect my, not my immediate condition, but it affects the school district. It affects how everything was done, whether you decided you were going to use Lincoln for Arbor. You know, based on the recommendation from the state, it said that you, if you would have taken the recommendation, you would have three of the four schools that would have had non-achieving IRN numbers. Right now, based on what your response was to the state, you're going to have three achieving IRN numbers and one non-achieving. So I think that, yeah, and we have the email. We have it from the Information Act, Freedom of Information Act. If you'd like, we can submit that as well. But it says, you know, these are what we recommend, and three of those were non-performing IRN numbers. And you've changed it to three performing instead.
What I'm just asking you to do is submit your comments to Mr. Bell.
Okay, well, I wanted the comments to be heard.
So he has something to answer to.
Right.
Specifically.
But what we want, we wanted to make sure that you heard it. These people heard it as well, that it wasn't something that we weren't, that we weren't aware of. I mean, we've really done our due diligence in this department, made sure that we were aware of what the percentages were, that was the combined population of the school, and why we think that we're, do this specific scholarship.
Thank you.
So that's what we wanted to let you know. Anything that you can do to meet together and make sure that you talk to the state prior to this decision-making would be beneficial.
I just wanted to just clarify one thing, Ms. Hanson, just so the listening audience understands. It isn't the fact, and I think you had mentioned the fact that we were stopping you from being able to make that move. It isn't that we're stopping you from being able to make that move. What you want is the financial support to go along with it. Is that accurate?
Correct. And I, again.
So I just wanted to make sure. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we're not stopping that from occurring.
No, you're absolutely not stopping it, but I do have.
We want your tuition paid.
Right, I believe that I'm.
Okay, I think it, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we were clear.
Right, I have three children and unfortunately, it's not, I'm not financially able to make that.
I'm standing, but I just wanted to make sure that we, that I, for me, from my own understanding, there wasn't anything else out there that was behind, that I needed to be aware of. So that's what my understanding was, I just wanted to make sure we're clear, I just wanted to make sure everybody else was clear, unless there's something else that I'm not aware of.
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
I need to state your name and address, please.
Tom Frye, I'm an attorney, I live at 310 East 200. I got involved in this initially not as an attorney. My godson is one of the kindergartners affected. I met with the Superintendent earlier today and discussed this matter with him. If any of you want copies of any of the documentation we have, let me know and I'll bring a boatload over here tomorrow for all of you. Now, some of the ladies have been in contact with other entities. One of them is Mary Rozokar of the State Board and she has proposed a compromise, which I would suggest to you people that may resolve things. She is proposing that the scholarships be granted this year. If the new schools perform, then there will be no scholarship for those students next That could resolve the issue. I'm not the only lawyer, there's three different firms looking at this and I think the last thing anyone wants is a whole bunch of lawyers sticking their noses in here, including mine. I don't think this is an intended result. We've got great new schools, thank you, they're well overdue. I think from talking to Superintendent Bell, you know, he's got a great plan to move forward, but like these women that I represent, we've got a track record here. We're not much above East Cleveland. I'm hoping that you will look into this, like I said, if you need documentation, I'll supply it. I don't know how many more of these women want to talk to you, but they're all mothers of students basically going to Arbor and they all have the same complaint. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anna Duganek, I live at 21830 Crystal. The City of Euclid has six elementary schools open in the 2011-2012 school year. Three were drawn academic emergency while one was ranked in the bottom 10% of the State Performance Index. Since the end of June this year, one of the six has been closed and four others torn down. Excuse me. These four schools are to be replaced by three new school buildings built on the same parcels of land as the three of the schools that have been torn down. As new schools, they have no school ID number and no academic history. If a child was attending a designated public school during the current year or zoned to attend a designated school in the upcoming year, he or she would be eligible to receive an Ed Choice Scholarship for a non-public school. My son Parker is to start kindergarten later this month. If he attended school during the 2011-2012 school year, he would have been zoned for Lincoln, a school that is now closed. The school was considered passing by the Ohio Department of Education. With the closing of Lincoln this past spring, Roosevelt School then became our home base school. Unfortunately, Roosevelt was one of the schools that was on academic watch and is one of the schools torn down to be replaced by Arbor Street School that was built on the rear of the Roosevelt property and is yet to be completely finished. I received a rejection letter from the department which stated, "Student would not be assigned to the public school indicated on the Ed Choice application. The school indicated was Roosevelt Elementary School. We ask that you take into account the following significant information. The newly-built Arbor Elementary School is located on the same parcel of land as the former Roosevelt School. The newly-formed Arbor Street Elementary School is now to be composed of students from these closed elementary schools. Roosevelt, whose IRN number is 032326, Memorial, whose IRN number is 000474, and Lincoln, whose IRN number is 043950. Two of these schools, Roosevelt and Memorial, are on the designated public schools list provided by the Department of Education. According to the rough figures provided by the Department of Education, 42% of the students are from Roosevelt, 41% are from Lincoln, and 17 are from Memorial Park. The combined population of students entering Arbor this year indicates that 59% are from former schools that are on academic watch. Fifteen kindergarten, Euclid was given the opportunity to assign the IRD number for Roosevelt School to the new Arbor School, but chose instead to assign Lincoln's IRN to the school. Fifteen kindergarten students zoned for Roosevelt and subsequently for the new Arbor School received Ed Choice Scholarships for the 2012-2013 school year. However, nineteen kindergarten students initially zoned for the now-closed Lincoln and currently assigned to Arbor have been denied Ed Choice Scholarships for the 2012-2013 academic school year. This is blatantly unfair and unconscionable and I am requesting that you reconsider the Ed Choice Scholarship for the 2012-2013 school year. Thank you.
You want to submit your comments also to Mr. Bell, please? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Enchantment. We have a motion to adjourn. So moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith. Yes. Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoel.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mr. Carius 50.
Thank you. We are adjourned.[1786.66][1786.66]